The Board of Commissioners and Commissioners for the County of Beaver County is meeting for Thursday, June 8, 2023. If you could please stand for the invocation by Reverend Stephen Kuhn. The community of celebration remains standing for the flag.
I want to be praised this morning, first of all, for a tragic situation that's developed in a nice city in France. It's a person who has knifed some very young children, some in pushchairs about four children and one adult. So I'm praying for that situation, apart from praying for yourselves in our meeting. It's quite a tragic situation. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing on this meeting and our commissioners and how they serve us in our county. We also ask you to bless all their staff and all who work in this building. We ask you to give them wisdom in their duties and all their decisions. And we also pray for those in our community with mental health issues and that more medical staff and facilities can be provided. We pray too for our young people who commit crimes and there are no facilities for punishment and a system that could be available for them to improve and become more valued citizens. We ask you to help our police officers in this ongoing situation. And we pray for this dreadful situation in France, that you will bless and above all try and heal these young children who have been stabbed this morning. And we pray for your peace in this meeting and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend.
Pardons to the flag of United States of America, interpublic, for just stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move to visitors' comments on agenda items.
Hi, if you state your name. My name's Jim Woolley, a Beaver, happy Beaver resident, and I would like to introduce the new librarian here in Beaver. Sarah, she's replacing Diane, who I talked about, who was here forty-six years. So this young lady has got a lot to do, but I also would like to thank the county for the funding that is going to the county. It's very nice to have that. It's very nice that we can keep up with the technology and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Caltori Parks Recreation and Tours.
So today's agenda is a contract for Zero Fossil. They are a staging company for our event in conjunction with Beaver County Boom with the closure of the Veteran Bridge. With the official announcement yesterday, it's gained a lot of traction, both on social media and people reaching out to us. We are still looking for food and our artisan vendors if interested, contact the tourism office, but I think this is going to be a great event for the communities, communities and Beaver County as a whole. We're very excited. We appreciate your guys' support in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items? Your non will move to proclamations, solicitor for those?
A proclamation of board of commissioners of the County of Beaver and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, celebrating amateur radio week in Beaver County.
Take that motion. Second. Any questions or discussions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Proclamation passed. We'll move to the approval of the minutes. Our motion to approve the May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three public meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. So our motion to approve the May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three work session meeting minutes.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move to the controller. Controller longer.
I have the bills for your review and approval.
Make a motion to stay the bills. Second that motion.
Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. We'll move to all business. Any all business? Your non, new business? Okay. Is the attachment on here?
Yeah.
Okay. No problem. New business. Is there a motion to approve attachment A listed on the agenda for fully new hire work from human resources?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move to the solicitor's office for resolutions.
On the resolution list today, our resolutions, oh six, oh eight, two three dash oh one through oh six, oh eight, two three dash thirty-one, the law office has reviewed those and recommend their approval at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve resolutions number zero, six, oh eight, two three dash zero one through zero six, oh eight, two three dash three one.
Second. Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. We'll now move to the visitors' comment on non-agenda items. As we have many guests here, I'd like to remind everyone that will be planning to speak, if you could please stand in, ask for speakers orderly fashion, state your name, your address. We had a policy that was passed in two thousand and three that each individual has three minutes to say what they would like to say. On our behalf, I know a lot of individuals here know what the commissioners do, but I want to make something very clear. We are happy to have you here and hear your concerns regarding your issues, but this board of commissioners has no oversight over any air, water, or any zoning issues that you may have with the Shell polymers manacropoly. But we are happy to hear your thoughts and your concerns of our residents here in Beaver County. So with that being said, I don't know how many people plan to speak. If you could just raise your hand and I will kind of go, if it's okay, I will just start here in front and work our way around. Is that okay? And also Channel eleven does have a microphone right there. If you'd like to stand behind the microphone, you can, if not, you can just stand at your seat.
Okay, I need to be able to show what I have here. I gave each of you a copy of this air pollution thing from nineteen eighty-seven showing that.
What's your name, sir?
John Leonard.
And where are you from?
One hundred and twenty-two B. Brad Gavill, Manacropoly, PA.
Thank you.
So it's showing you what a cadmium was displaced in nineteen eighty-seven, but more importantly, it's showing that, say, no meth is now the Shell plant. And what that also shows you is wind direction. Over years, if Beaver had fifty pounds of cadmium in eighty-seven, that mean, and Senator Township had four, that means that ninety-two percent of the time, the toxins off of this plant will be right here in Beaver. Okay? How much is the safe level of toxins? You know?
You're going to tell us.
Well, I'm going to tell you what they allow and they're putting out right right now. This is the, this does not have the benzene on it. This is the chemical that they're allowed to emit right now. With that in mind, if you add them all up, plus the benzene is thirty-four tons a year. When you add them all up, Beaver will get ninety-two percent of the six thousand three hundred and twenty-six tons a day of the toxins from the Shell plant. A day. This isn't, this isn't like a month or a year or anything like that. It's every single day. Now with that in mind, I'm very concerned about school kids because they're outside. They're playing football, they're doing all kinds of sports outside. I need to know how the commissioners are going to address that since it's going to be, the emissions are going to be right here in Beaver itself. What are you going to do to help the students of the schools to protect them or the senior citizens? Any comments? I did pass these out to other people in here, so everybody's on board. You can shake your head if you, if you received them. And that way everybody will know what you guys received and be able to know what you're doing about it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue to work around this way. My left, your right. Can you state your name and your address, sir?
My name is Dominic Tramarchi. I live at twenty-eight-two Cave Drive, Potter'sville. I live right above where the plant is and I get a clear view of the plant and all. I know you're saying that, you know, do nothing with air pollution. My thing is, in August of nineteen, or twenty-twenty, I bought my property. There was nothing underneath me. Now, the ground was, was leveled, but in the interim, when I moved in May of twenty-one, they put a coupling station. I know it's federal. I know they blow the horns. What I don't understand is from seven o'clock AM to ten o'clock PM, very little noise. Up ten o'clock, all of a sudden, they're coupling, they're blowing horns. I read the federal guidelines on the horn blowing. It's supposed to be when it's through traffic, where they're coupling. There's no through traffic. There's no train like there is down there in industry where there's a crossing and they must blow the horn crossing because I did drive coach buses for, for when they were bringing the workers into the plant. So I understand that. But underneath where I'm living and our bedroom is right above there, we've got the view of the river, we've got the view of Independence or Bathport. They're caught, they're just blowing horns and blowing horns. I was down for a while, there was no horn blowing. I don't understand, is there an ordinance in Beaver County with this midnight by blowing horns, three o'clock in the morning, sometimes they're blowing a horn because they see another, another person or there's always trucks or whatever driving a pickup trucks.
I would defer you to Potter Township.
I went to Potter Township.
They, they are the ones that have the ordinance says we have no county ordinance that says that over C fifty-three and a half municipalities, individual noise light, parking dog, whatever where this, we have no peruse over that. So I would defer you to Potter Township. They have ordinance says against those things. So, okay.
I'm John Flynn. I live at one fifty Evergreen Circle in Brighton Township, and that's about a mile north. I just have some general comments. I've, I was born and raised in Beaver and then I lived in Oklahoma and Texas for many years and was excited to move back here when I retired. And it was disappointing to see, you know, this plant come in, but, you know, I thought with the new technology and five billion dollars that, that, you know, that they would have it pretty well squared away. But, I mean, I'm an environmental engineer and I've worked in the regulatory industry in Oklahoma for the state and it's surprising to see how much non-compliance they are with the conditions of the permit and the amount of violations that they have as they're just starting out. And being a mile away, I can see the glow at night and I can hear it. It's like trains. And I guess my other comment, other than the surprise of the amount of non-compliance they have with the conditions, is I've sat in on some of the phone calls, the conference calls from the concerned group, and they seem to have a lot of frustration trying to get answers from, you know, the government officials who, you know, their mission is to kind of oversee this, answer questions. That seems surprising to me that they're having so much trouble, you know, finding out about what the corrective actions are going to be and what's being admitted. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Meyer. I live in Independence Township, three seventh floor, Long Spring Road. I've heard from a lot of concerned parents. I have a three-year-old and a lot of concerned grandparents about Shell's pollution. And we're not going to stand by while our children's health is compromised. This petrochemical pollution coming from the plant is invisible until it results in serious health consequences like cancer and respiratory and cardiovascular and neurological and reproductive problems. Families living near petrochemical facilities need to be protected from harmful pollution. As community members, we are told, or we are not always told what's emitted from Shell's facility, even though we can smell the chemicals. People in the community are scared. And I just want to speak for those people, you know. You know, children are especially vulnerable to this pollution and it's because their bodies are still developing. They breathe in more air relative to their size. There's an association found between benzene, which we know is going to issue with the plant, and childhood leukemia. And it's scary, you know, it's causing a lot of anxiety in the community. It's, it's because of residents that have been paying attention and spoken up about what's really going on at Shell's plastic plants that we've made, made some progress. But what we really need is for elected officials to stand with us so that we can make more progress and pull them, you know, get them to be held more accountable. So we need local leaders, leaders to stand up and support us. The community feels betrayed. We need, and parents feel scared and we need, we need more support. Even if Shell comes back online, they're making no promises that they're not going to continue to exceed their pollution limitations. So we need to all come together, including elected officials, to make demand better protections from Shell and petrochemicals in our community and to ensure a safe and healthy future for the children in our community and the vulnerable people like elderly people in our community as well. If I may, I have a statement from another community member that I'd like to read a little bit of, and his name's Luke Zuka. He lives nearby. And he says, he's a father of five. He's a small business owner. He's built his life here and he believes in the future here, but today the future feels under threat. He says, he says, quote, "Just a few miles from my home, it's Shell's ethane cracker plant. Since its reopening last Wednesday, our bones have been sounding alerts, not of inclement weather or traffic jams, but of harmful air quality warnings. This is not a distant issue. It's right on our doorstep. It's in the air we breathe and the community we love. Let's be clear, this isn't just about a multinational corporation overstepping its bounds, polluting our environment, volatile organic compounds, nitrogen and oxide and other harmful pollutants. No, this is personal. This is about the health of our families, our friends and our neighbors. This is about the future. We are leaving for our children and generations to come. Shell's been cited repeatedly for violations with recent penalties amounting to ten million. It sounds significant, but to them it's nearly a cost of doing business. And we need to question where are these penalties being paid and who will benefit? In the name of transparency, I would like all of us to see the receipts for how this fine is spent, who will it actually benefit? It should be spent on real-time air quality sensors spread throughout the county accessible to the public, not like the fence line sensors far below the exhaust stacks that Shell polymers and Mact uses to state they are not polluting our air. Meanwhile, the real cost, our health, our environment, our future is too high to quantify. The plant is designed to churn out raw materials for synthetic plastics for the next thirty years. The ramifications of such output stretch far beyond our generation. It's a problem that will linger and it's an issue our children, our grandchildren and their grandchildren will inherit. The dialogue with Shell lacks transparency as concerned citizens and neighbors of the plant don't we deserve to know the quality of the air we breathe? This brings me to our elected officials. Their responsibility is to represent us, to protect us. We must call upon our elected officials to fulfill their duties to the public. Change is not beyond our reach. It begins with us. Let's seek a future that our children will be proud to inherit. That's from Luke Zuta.
At this minute, I think your three minutes are up. I think we have to move on to other people.
I would also just like to share this picture from my daughter, and this is what she wants for the future of Beaver County. And she hears some, the river, the fish, the trees, she trails through the trees, the sky, the sun has sunsets, and she wants all of this for the future of Beaver County, not more pollution, not more plastic.
Thank you.
My name is Jill and Harris Hunkler, and I'm actually a neighbor from Belmont County, Ohio. So I won't take up much time, but I just have a few points I want to make, which is the cradle to grave, plastics is a horrible idea, not only for communities, but for the entire planet, for our water, for our oceans. And I hope that you have done your due diligence in educating yourselves about the risks and harms, not only of petrochemical and cracker plants, but also recognizing that all the harms from fracking, including the fact that it takes eleven million gallons and more to crack one single well, which they're pumping from our ponds, our streams and our reservoirs, permanently contaminating it and removing it for, for always, forever. Also that, are you aware about the cancer cluster of the children in southwestern Pennsylvania? Have you heard from other families in, in your county about the health impacts and the suffering and not only the noise, sound, but there's real health impacts? Then you get to the part where, so you, you make, you've got the fracking, you've got the cracking to make the plastic. Then you have, what do we do with it? So now all this chemical recycling, saying it's, you know, the solution, it's not. Once again, that's, will be a permanent source of air pollution, toxic air pollution for the communities, which of course they always build in it. There's vast areas of open land, but where do they build these infrastructure sites? Right here in Beaver. Where's the PCTG cracker plant going to be built? Right near Mounds though, right in Dilly's Bottom. And, and tons and tons of toxic air pollution, let alone the water pollution. So I'm just asking you to please educate yourselves, if you don't already know the risks, and do whatever you can to support your community and uplift them and hold the industry and the regulators to stay accountable. And I thank you and appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Peter, voyage one five three Cherry Lane in Alakewa, Pennsylvania. And it's apparent to me from yesterday's meeting, from eyes on Shell and other things, that the cracker plant, the Shell LLC and Potter Township, they're not working on the problem of pollution. They're just not working on it. So we're going to work on them and you. I say that as a nearly fifty-year PhD in physics. I'm tarnished there. I'm getting older, but we're going to go to work on you.
Thank you, sir. Your right side of the room, my left. All right, we'll move back here. Yes. Oh, there's some. Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. I'm just going to read my statement.
Can you just state your name?
Amanda Kemmer, one twelve Ostra at Darlington. So my name is Amanda Kemmer and I am a lifelong Beaver County resident. I grew up in Beaver and graduated from Beaver High School. From along the Ohio River with all the energy plants and other plants along the river, the area has always been jokingly known as Cancer Valley. The amount of cancer clusters in young adults is astounding, myself included. I was diagnosed at thirty-five with stage four kidney cancer and have to worry now that one of my children will end up with cancer thanks to Norfolk Southern's enrollment and spillage of toxic chemicals. I moved to Darlington five years ago for the land of the American dream of living off our land with our chickens, ducks and the small garden. Those dreams were taken away on February third, twenty twenty-three, when the train derail four and a half miles from my home carried many toxic chemicals. Those chemicals carry the risk of causing cancer or infertility. I now have to worry about that for my children's future. The East Palestine derailment has shown us how dangerous these volatile organic compounds are and how ineffective our government is at cleanup and at holding these large corporations like Norfolk Southern accountable for these actions. This train derailment has caused my family to experience burning eyes, congestion, chemical burns to the nose and throat, asthma attacks, nausea, upset stomachs, diarrhea, headaches, nosebleeds, hand tremors and seizures. My four-year-old's asthma is uncontrolled and has had to add several medications to control it because the chemicals in the air have been triggering. My eight-year-old and myself have been newly diagnosed with asthma related to chemical exposure. I have experienced an unexplained seizure while they were digging up the chemical pits with no history of ever having a seizure. We no longer feel safe in our own home. Now we have the Shell plant poisoning our air and water in our county, and once again, our officials are not holding these large corporations accountable. The Shell plant has blown three air pollution limits and has already received seven violations. When is it going to be enough? Our elected officials need to hold these corporations accountable for polluting our air, water and soil. This is why it's important that our local officials step in to hold Shell accountable for all of us. Our children deserve to live in a world of clean air, be able to drink unpolluted water and not have to worry if the soil they are planting is contaminated. Since a train derailment in East Palestine, Ohio, I've stepped into the role of a community activist. I never expected to be one, but somebody has to protect the health and safety of our community. As a cancer survivor, I now have to worry that my children could suffer the same fate due to the chemical bomb that was detonated a few miles from my home. Some days I feel like all that I have left is my voice and I'm going to continue to get louder until I'm convinced our local politicians and leaders hear us and care about us.
Hi, my name is Andy Gray and I'm a resident of.
Margaret, Margaret.
I can hear you. Sorry. My name is Andy Gray and I'm a resident of one thirty-three Dred in Alakewa. We're here today to talk to you as fellow residents. We know you all live in Beaver. We're here in Beaver County about what's been happening with the Shell cracker plant and the fact that these pollution events are just not acceptable. So we have asks of you, but I just want to note that we have sixty thousand, almost seventy thousand, I think now we're people that, thank you, that are calling on Shell as well as the county to implement basic health and safety measures to protect the surrounding communities from danger. So the asks that we have for you today, will you commit to having real-time notifications of emissions exceedances by August, twenty twenty-three and a well-functioning emergency management plan in place by November, twenty twenty-three? Will you commit to call on the state to halt polluting operations at the plant if Shell has ten more violations?
Number three, will you commit to hosting a town hall where community members can ask questions of relevant personnel, relevant personnel openly and publicly about Shell and the county's emergency response and emergency notification plans no later than July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, I mean, we're open. The fact that we're here listening to you now, gather all the information possible, camp. We've been butting heads with the lady in the back with Tom in Darlington with Norfolk and Southern. We're on the phone with the cracker plant every other week, trying to get updates. But what you have to understand is the county commissioners do not have the jurisdiction or the ability, other than to do what you're doing right now, open support, you know, help our people. We don't have the essence of the law. That's on the state level and on the federal level. And we can bring those people to the table. We can ask them to come and vent, so you can vent and they can hear what you have to say. But in essence, we don't have the power to do what you want us to do. We can bring the people to the table to do like we've done in Darlington. And I think we've done in Darlington six or seven times, at least minimally. I mean, I can guarantee you that, that we, this board of commissioners set up meetings with federal state people to be here, but for us to personally do that, and believe me, half a mile from that cracker plant up the hill. If you're leaving the cracker plant and you're heading towards the mall, over top of the back of the hotel that's there is where I live. I mean, and I built the house ten years ago. It was right before the building of the cracker plant, during the building of the cracker plant, and going through these different events, I can tell my front porch, and it sounds like a jet taking off when, when they're flaring. I mean, and my sky lights up and red, so I know what you, what you're all talking about. I witnessed it each and every time they do a flare up. But I'm sure you're going to hear from the other two members, that they're going to be in the same ballpark as I. And with that, I thank you all for coming and telling us and bringing to our attention this extra stuff that you're telling us, in addition to what we already know, what we've been dealing with.
Yeah, go ahead. I have a question.
Good to see you again, ma'am. I didn't get the other.
Oh, sorry. I'm Shelley Meyer. I'm from Brighton Township, one zero one Erickson Circle.
So, so I do know you. Emailing you, thanks. It's great to put Facebook. I think you guys know I'll go anywhere and like anyone in the subject. But you also know my background. I was born and raised pretty much inside those fence lines. I was a twenty-year-old who took the job as a shift working lab tech. After my mother died from cancer and I had to drop out of college, you and gentlemen. Those people inside those fence lines raised me. I am who I am today by working side by side with people that were mayors of small towns. They were fire chiefs, volunteer firemen. They were geeks of churches. They went to, they sat in the same pews as my family. They sent their kids to the same schools that I did. And I believe that anybody that works for a living, uses their head, their heart, their hands to make a living, deserves dignity and respect. I share many of the same concerns you have. I have. I have many of the same goals that you have about reducing our carbon footprint, about keeping the environment clean. We're spending a lot of money on parks, recreation, cleaning up old sites and stuff. But I disagree that the methodology to get there is to shut down an industry that has every right to operate, but they need to operate within rules. And I've been on record, everybody in the press has called me repeatedly, I'm on record as saying, I will defend the industries. But I disagree a little bit with our friend from Belmont County that the plastics industry has not increased our quality of life rather than de-creasit. Nobody likes plastic bags blowing the trees. I get that. But if you look at medical devices, medical supplies, food spoilers, lightweighting, vehicles, cell phones, all the technology, that doesn't happen without an industry that I spent 35 years of my life working in and working side by side by thousands of great, decent, hard-working friends, neighbors, and taxpayers. So you guys know where I come from. Daniel knows where I come from. I've had these conversations and stuff. I have some of the same goals. I'd be pleased to be part of a town hall discussion to bring us through. I can, and you don't know, we've had conversations with the DEP. We've had conversations which we've let them know are disappointing. As I said before, I will defend the industry, but I can't defend how they started out and the excursions they've had. Can't defend that. That's on them. And, but the people that can hold them accountable are the state regulators and the federal regulators who permit them to operate that plant. So that's kind of where I am, but glad to see you both here. I will talk to you later after the meeting some more about this. Again, we have some of the same goals and objectives. Just, I'm not automatically opposed to anything of oil and gas. I know many of you in this room are, and that's a nonstarter for me. It's too important. We, I took an oath to look out for the health, safety, and economic well-being of 168,000 residents of Beaver County. And I have to walk the line to make sure that that's in balance. And that's how I make my decisions.
Can I finish up my second question?
Sure. Sorry to grab the...
That's okay. After the wastewater treatment malfunction, I personally emailed you.
Yeah.
I have a concern, mother, in this community. My daughter goes to school, they're outside once or twice a day to recess. I personally asked you, I was hearing rumors of a benzene leak. According to the National Institute of Health, there's probably no safe exposure of benzene. You got back to me and you said, I'm not sure what you've heard, Shelley, but I was finally told there was no benzene involved.
Right.
I made that decision to send my daughter to school. So I would like to know why I was given that information and what's gonna be done in the future, provide better information. And if you're not the person to get that information from, who is?
The state regulators and Shell monitoring. I'm offered more monitoring.
But I asked you personally, since you probably have a contact at Shell and you personally told me, I don't know what you've heard, but there was no benzene.
That was based on...
Who can I count on to get correct, real-time information about my kit, my kit's health?
And I feel bad about that. But I was told no benzene was detected by a monitor...
By whom?
By a monitor of people who went out and monitored it and found no benzene. That's whoever's reporting back to you.
By Shell? Was it by Shell? Did Shell give you, did Shell...
No, it wasn't Shell.
Shell did give you...
Excuse me. The ladies are speaking. You have your time, your three minutes.
I sent my daughter to school based on that information, and I would like to know if you gave the incorrect information.
That was independent samplers who went and responded to the other complaints and said they did not detect any benzene.
But if it's not your job to give a concerned citizen the correct information, whose job does it?
So this is part of our asks to...
Shell.
Real-time notifications of emissions exceedances or events like this by August 2023 and a well-functioning emergency management plan in place by November 2023. We know we're not being notified when things like that benzene release happen. We didn't see notifications from the county except for one after the controlled release with the derailment. So we as residents expect better notifications, expect better communication, and we're asking you to participate in that so that it can happen.
So we can participate by advocating for it. And I think that's what Commissioner Manay, Commissioner Deos said, and I think you guys understand that. So we could participate by advocating with the Eyes on Shell and other organizations, but at this time, we have no information that you guys have. We've set our piece to Shell. We have one contact, I have one contact, I don't know if my colleagues have more than one contact. I have one contact with Shell that for months, probably almost a year, where there was no communication until they started to oversee their limitations on pollution and we started to really stress our voice. Our simple thing was do better. You have to do better for our residents. You were supposed to be a good neighbor to Beaver County. You weren't. You weren't a good neighbor during COVID. We expressed that. You aren't a good neighbor now. We've expressed it to them. How high goes up their chain of command, we don't know. So we could work on those commitments that you're asking us to, but it's ultimately not going to come from the board of commissioners. We can prepare an emergency management plan, but I do believe we probably have one, and I'm sure many people in this room attend the LEPC meetings, correct? Local emergency management commissioner? Yeah, I know. The doctor down here does. So my guess is we have a plan that is approved by the state. Whether you guys believe the state's plan or approval of that plan is significant enough, we could only be advocates and say we want to do more. So, and when it comes to, I know there was some money, questions about the fines, I don't know what individual said it. You know, we can't even get answers on what's being done with the fines from Norfolk Southern, let alone the fines from Shell Petrochemical. Those fines, when they say they're coming to Beaver County, it just means they're coming to this board of commissioners. They're going to the governor's office, they're going to the DEP, and they're gonna regulate what they're gonna do with that $10 million. Even though the $6 million is supposed to come out to Beaver County, we don't know how. We've set our piece. We want live air quality monitoring, not only in the one-mile radius, but throughout the whole county and in obviously the southwestern region. You know, it'd have to be an organized plan. We've already told these people this, whether, you know, we're out in the public saying that, whether, you know, the media coverage isn't that big here in Beaver County. We're supportive of this, just like Commissioner Deos said. Commissioner Manay lived near the train derailment. Commissioner Deos lives less than a mile. I live less than a mile. I live in Center Township. So I see it. I smell, I have a four-year-old and a seven-year-old this summer. They'll both be four and seven. I have concerns for their health as well. But I could tell you, whenever something was spilled, we didn't know about it till we found it on Twitter. It's something we have to do better as a community, but it's not gonna, you want things from us that's, I don't wanna say not realistic, but we could only be an advocate for something we can't produce.
So can we ask that you as commissioners will advocate along with the LEPC to give residents as well as this community information on when we have things like the benzene release? Because that is not currently happening and being able to be notified that there's going to be a controlled release or vented burn, that there's going to be a benzene leak, any of the industrial polluters in the region? Does the county commissioners, will they agree to that today, advocating to have a better emergency response plan so that notifications can get to residents so that we are aware when something like that happens? So that Shelley doesn't have to send her daughter to school when there's a benzene release?
So I could personally commit that. I'm sure my colleagues will as well, but again, your decision to send your child to school is probably needs to be made before that we know any information. And we're not gonna send false information. That's a problem. That's the issue. Once we say something, once we put something out there that's not true, then it really causes a lot more issues. And at that time, it may be too late.
So, but that system can be improved so that you're notified, your residents here, we're notified, right? We know what we're being exposed to.
Yeah, I firmly believe that as a sitting county commissioner who has a voice to reach 168,000 residents, that we need to be informed better in a timely manner, which will help inform you in a timely way.
Are you demanding to be informed, though? I mean, are you like, why is it not happening before?
We've had some very serious conversations with them. They've gotten better since this last incident.
It's two months since the incident.
Well, I had to check with them. I didn't, I mean, they said they were gonna start up, they ended up running. I didn't even know they were up and running until I called to find out recently if they were up. Oh, yeah, we're running. Okay. We don't get any advance notice on this. We don't have any advance. The state regulators are the first people that they have to report to whenever they have excursions that leave the plant. But DEP doesn't contact us. We don't have any direct line on that.
So that has to be changed, though. You should be notified, your residents, if there's going to be a release or any sort of pollution happening in a way that could harm you or your community.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
So these are the asks I'm gonna hand this to you. I sent it to you as well, we know. We're looking forward to working with all of you on these and that town hall.
Absolutely.
Please come out and learn how to collage with us.
Thank you.
Collages now you're talking.
You can just state your name and your address.
Yeah, Andy, here's a, I'm a resident of County. Um, and so the call of attention on what Shelley said. As someone who is receiving questions from parents about, hey, I took my kid out of school, should I evacuate? I'll tell you, I called the DEP, I called the National Response Center, and I called Jean in the LEPC. And you know what Jean told me? Jean said, I have no idea. I am 25 years old in Allegheny County. Why am I doing work to protect residents of Beaver County than you guys are? I just give the people every bit of information I could, and I said, no regulator and no official is giving the information. I don't know what to tell you, but I'm doing my best. And whereas Commissioner Manay told Shelley, there was no benzene in the air. She said her kid is at school. You know, you won't put out wrong information that people read in a percentage of because. So you said that the person who went out to the independent testing saw no benzene? So now that we know there was benzene, are you, while finding a new contractor, are you having a conversation with that person? Are you going to tell us what monitoring equipment was used? Is it not working?
Not to interrupt the county, but that data was correct. At that point in time, there was no benzene detected. Prior to that, there was, and that's what we didn't know.
Can you share the test results and the equipment that was used in one of the...
No, I'm not gonna give you all that. And I told you before, when it comes to the LEPC, we've all told you before, they have nothing to do with air emissions or air exertion. There is nothing that the LEP does that oversees air emissions. It's not their job, it's not their role.
But benzene is a personagen, and it was released into the environment.
I know it is. I know it is.
So if it's released into the environment in a way that isn't safe, the LEPC should be notified of that. Then they should be notified, you and us, so that we know.
And again, they can only respond to what they know, and if they aren't being informed, then maybe that's where we can have a better emergency response plan or work on that.
So, but I guess the government, who then sent out the independent monitoring to get the results, because there wasn't no benzene? Was that the LEPC? Was that...
Now, the county has not sent any regulating testing out. That's not our rule. So whoever Commissioner Manay received that from is a reporter that's more likely sent to him.
Yes.
Or sent to many individuals.
So can we confirm that it wasn't Shell doing that testing?
I don't know what testing Shell did, but that information I got didn't come from Shell.
But you can't tell us to what came from, what equipment they used, the line of testing was done?
No.
So what we're just supposed to believe is that it was done and it was coming out? You wouldn't think that any of this?
It was one data point that showed no benzene. Obviously, it was wrong. It was erroneous. I mean, we're gonna debate this all day long.
Yeah, I think...
It's not gonna come to any other conclusion. But I gave erroneous information because I didn't know who was benzene involved. Prior to that, I got one piece of data a day and a half later that showed no benzene detected.
So I'm just wondering if moving forward, if we could find, you know, a new type of equipment, reliable, real-time monitoring?
And I think that's one thing we hope to see, that the DEP spends that $6 million that they say it's coming back to Beaver County on, is equipment that's going to monitor the situations happening along the Ohio River. And that's one thing we said to Secretary Nagrin, we said to the governor's office, we said to other DEP officials, we said to our director of emergency management. We need them to invest that money if they find Shell, which wasn't enough. We've all said that. We all know their profits in 2022, 21, and beyond and before. We want to see that money come back to Beaver County and be used the correct way. And we don't know who is even gonna be making those decisions, but it's not the board of commissioners.
I'd also love some monitors. I just want to say lastly, I don't think that we of you were at the last LEPC meeting. It was the last one. LEPC meetings always fall on the worst of days, but I was there. I was the only non-LEC number there, and I will be there still waiting on Shell's emergency response plan as well, which is deeply concerning to me because we know that this is all going to happen. So I hope that we're all working together to get all the information that is needed.
Thank you. If you could just state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Andrew Boomer. I'm an Allegheny County resident. I have some comments for folks who couldn't make it today. This one is from Sherry Mackenstein from Brighton Township. I've been worried about the Shell plastic plant since it started construction, and since it began operating, those fears have only intensified. Worried about the elderly in the area and what happens if something goes wrong at the plant. Elderly folks aren't on social media, a lot of them don't use text messaging. Who is going to protect them and notify them? I don't trust that Beaver County has a plan in place for a crisis that is timely, safe, and equitable. From Prashina Sislov from South Beaver. I've been sick almost every day since February 5th, since the train derailment. I've had a sore throat, burning in my chest and stomach, runny nose, coughing, vomiting, diarrhea, itchy eyes, and congestion. I've been living like this for four months now. No one is listening to or helping the people of Beaver County recover from the tragic train derailment right on the border in East Palestine, Ohio. After seeing the county's response to such a catastrophic event, I worry every day that they are not prepared for what could happen at the Shell plastic plant. I know Diane has some other folks who couldn't make it today, and she's gonna read the statements out, but I just want to say, like, my organization's in litigation with Shell. I've been on the ground in East Palestine, like, personally raising funds, you know, raising funds for air purifiers to decontaminate their homes. You know, I've been on the ground seeing the cleanup efforts that are just spraying, you know, misting water over an entire neighborhood that has VOCs in it. You know, they were contracted out by Norfolk Southern, they were given a thumbs up by the DEP, right? You know, I saw the response from the federal governments, from the state agencies, and, you know, Jackie Trigby is someone who, like, appreciates fiscal responsibility. You know, all this money that's getting spent is not as helpful as it should be or can be. I mean, there's a good argument to be made that folks in this room have spent more money and done more work to actually decontaminate homes than the federal government has, right? So when something happens at the Shell plant, all that cost and burden, if we look at past incidents with petrochemical, you know, facilities and industry broadly, that cost is gonna fall on your municipality, it's gonna fall on your churches, it's gonna fall on your community organizations. So it's gonna be folks in this room and our neighbors who are stepping in to clean that mess up, and we shouldn't be passive doing that when this company has almost made $4 billion in its last quarter, right? And to the point of, you know, we're doing this for the economy, you know, we gotta balance this stuff, like, I hear that. You know, I come from a proud working-class family. I've worked for unions. You know, back in 2019, I used to go up to the parking lot and talk to rank-and-file union members who were building the plant on their way in and out. I got neighbors in Swissvale who would help work on that and stopped working on that plant. And this is all anecdotal, you know, that's fine, but you didn't want to work on that plant because they didn't feel that it was safe. I know that there are unions who took a 10% cut off their normal contact rate to work at that plant. I know that there are workers who got lead poisoning doing the pile driving to build that plant, right? That's coming from rank-and-file members. You're not gonna hear that, you know, from Shell. You're probably not gonna hear that from, you know, union leadership either. And so I think when we talk about this economic stuff, we need to understand that there are plenty of ways to create a healthy, thriving economy that doesn't include poisoning people, ruining water, polluting air, and creating a situation where the cost of this business, that's the reality of, the cost of this business is being externalized on the people in this room. That's not good business, right? That's actually a bad business.
If that's the economy that we're saving, I don't, what's the point?
Well, we have an 11% poverty rate in Beaver County. And I talked about the economic well-being, I'm talking about how do we raise 11% of our people out of poverty? Best way to do that is with Shell. And having disposable incomes that can support the small, mom-and-pop towns and our legacy direct-front towns. So that's what I'm talking about when I talk about the economic well-being of 168,000 residents.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Say your name and your address, please.[1780.99]
Um, hi, Commissioner, I'm Scott Vermeier. I am a resident down in Banport, Long Georgetown, right? Uh, I lived there for about five years now. Um, we moved in as the plant was being constructed, so it wasn't fully up and running yet. I can attest that the past about year has been the worst my health has been, um, living in proximity to it. My mother and grandmother were residents of Van Bier Homes. They recently relocated to Calphetta, Ohio. Sadly, not much better because the tri-state area is all pretty polluted, has a heavy industrial, uh, polluted history. But, long story short, I think, um, moving forward, we have to view our county as having a self-sustainable future. Otherwise, it is going to cost us so much more in the end. Um, I think there is a heavy relationship between these industrial pollutants and the economy. And this will affect everybody's health, like paying for your own blood testing, whatnot, if you don't have insurance. But I think if we focus more on environmental mediated efforts in the area, you could employ tons of people um, to essentially steward the county's resources, which are essential for to have any kind of working-class, self-sustainable future moving forward. Um, a lot of these compounds linger in the atmosphere for years, decades, if not longer, often having the really carcinogenic effects on humans, and they're just high enough at this point, sitting down in the valleys because of inversion. Um, and if we don't start trying to remediate this, which if you look at the West Coast, it might sound funny, but they've actually used fungi, um, the oyster mushroom, funny enough, you just mix it with hardwoods on, and you can layer creek beds, you can layer contaminated soil. They could have done this for the East Palestine train derailment. There's tons of studies on the efficacy of it to remove industrial pollutants and heavy metals. And I just think that it's appalling that any of our tax dollars should go towards funding any kind of, uh, corporate industry that ultimately takes advantage of our politicians, our workers, and our tax dollars. And there's so many other ways this community, we could be self-sustainable by stewarding our own natural resources, whether that's for agriculture, production of medicine, or just welcoming cleaner industries and nothing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Bob Schmetzer, other than four thousand eight, Jordan Street, South Heights. Born and raised in this county, and I've seen a lot happen over the years. Also work in local politics and used to give the oath of office that people took a position of public trust would swear to. They would swear to obey and defend the Constitution of Pennsylvania and the United States with fidelity. And I believe that the Constitution is the glue that binds all of us together. There's no differences in, in what's going on. So I'd like to point out, one of the somewhat unknown articles in our Constitution, Article One, Section Twenty-seven, is our environmental rights. And I think that that's been slipped in the past, overrun by gun control and freedom of speech and all of the other rights that we have under that Constitution. That's our environmental rights, and we have a right to clean air.
To clean water.
We have a right to clean water and the preservation of our environment, not only for ourselves, but for future generations. Just listening to this group of people, citizens, taxpayers here, uh, pleading out for help, uh, I just see too many public officials say, well, that's not my job. That belongs to somebody else. And that one should run a small dairy bush until your tongue hangs out and you get nothing done. Beaver County, uh, has been an industrial wasteland for many years. We've watched the Renaissance in Pittsburgh, how they've cleaned up the smoky city. And with the, with the steel mills going down, uh, things have cleaned up quite a bit. But yet, we have the American Lung Association still saying that we got a double F in air quality, and our river is one of the most polluted in the country. Like, who's telling us that we're clean now? We all have an obligation to make our environment, and we have a right to have an environment that's safe for us to breathe and our children and future generations. And I, I know when, I guess the smart people win with their oath of office, they didn't say anything about guaranteeing a profit for any corporation. They just said that you need to protect the people. So I, I, those are some of the things that I had on my mind. I wanted to bring to your attention that all of us have an obligation to work on this a whole lot better. I listened to a Zoom call out of Pittsburgh with the fire chief, uh, with the bomb trains going through the city. How are we going to evacuate twenty thousand people? And they're going to use that PFAS to squirt out the fires and get it, get it into the water system. So I don't know what we're doing, but I think we can do a lot better job. And, you know, we saw that chemical fire in Rochester. That was a failure, uh, as far as evacuations go. A lot of people were really sick over that, across the river from South Heights, where they mixed the chemicals for the fracking. That plume came over Beaver County. Allegheny County was in charge of that because it was in Leetstale. And they had the schools, uh, shelter in place and told the elderly, you know, get off the streets. But yet, the river flowed into Beaver County. All the smoke from the plume from the National Weather Service showed all that black plume came over Beaver County. Beaver County was not notified until the fire was out four hours later. We have to do something much better with our emergency management. If we have to evacuate, how are we going to do it? I, I see us being stuck in the same position the city of Pittsburgh is. You know, we're unprepared, and we need to do a better job. Thank you.
There's a lady with a hat, Mr. Schmetzer, if she could go. Thank you, then I'll be next. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name's Heather Long Van Tassel. While I do live in Allegheny County, I'm here to read a resident's statement, as well as provide a statement for Three Rivers Waterkeeper, a local nonprofit in our region. First, I'll go with the residents, as I think it's really important to hear what they have to say. My name is Erica Wallace, and I'm a resident of Midland, PA. My husband and I are parents to a special-needs toddler who is one-six-hundredth in the world to have his specific genetic disorder. Currently, my family and I live ten miles from the derailment site. I grew up four miles from that site where my parents still live today. We also live five miles from the Shell cracker plant. Over the last few months, there has been a lot of fear, confusion, anger, and sadness, not just in our home, but our surrounding entire area. Firstly, I do not feel safe here anymore. The area that both my husband and I grew up in is poisoned, and the fines that Shell has paid are not being distributed to the people who are going to suffer long-term consequences for a major corporation's actions. We're looking into relocating, but it was, would be obviously a huge financial burden, if even possible. After putting over fifty thousand dollars into our house over the past few years to make it our forever home, I'm scared to stay here. I'm terrified of what this could mean for our son, who is immune-compromised and has already been through things kids should never have to face. We're already seeing our property values dropping, small businesses failing, health issues rising, and relationships being strained. There is no visible wall that separates us from these issues just because we are more than one mile away. Nobody should have to be afraid to live in their home. My two-year-old deserves better than this. We all deserve better than this. And as you've been hearing these residents' comments, this is not different than what you've been hearing. And I'm now going to talk a little bit for Three Rivers Waterkeeper, who is a local nonprofit. This is your waterkeeper in this region who works to protect the water quality of our Three Rivers, this region, not with the Ohio River and the tributaries. We've been monitoring the water quality around Shell, as well as our self-reporting data. They have had multiple Clean Water Act violations without any enforcement actions. Yes, they've received notices of violation, but there has been no penalty and enforcement along with that. In fact, they've received some notices of violation for foam discharges, and they actually used anti-foaming agents that had a higher hazardous rating than the surfactants that created the foam discharge. Oh, my God. They also have had rarely high stormwater discharges, that is just a merely self-in-report. So those unfamiliar with water permits is that there's allowances that they can discharge into our waterways. Things that are not expected but are potential contaminants that can come out of their discharges, they get a monitoring report without an actual limit on it because they're not expected to reach limits that would be needed in a permit. The limits they've been having for multiple different inorganics, such as aluminum, zinc, and thallium, have been extremely high, and no one's going and checking their stormwater discharge. This is particularly problematic because they're on top of our brownfield site from an old sink smelting and a still highly contaminated soil. When stormwater runs across soil, it picks up the contamination. Second, when there is a spill, it'll go directly into the stormwater. And if they're not managing their stormwater appropriately, it is going to go into the Ohio River. And for those who are unfamiliar with the Ohio River, it's actually a drinking water source for five million people and a recreational source for thirty million people. It's really important we protect the Ohio River. Yes, we talked about the pollution that's in it today, but it's still an extremely, extremely valuable freshwater system that we must protect. And to look the other way when they're knowingly violating the Clean Water Act, but also allowing them to have unlimited discharge of inorganic materials out of the stormwater drain is not an appropriate thing to do. I realize the folks that are listening here today cannot go in and change something that's dealing with federal law, but you all have way better connections with the regulators than us residents and nonprofits do. And it is your job to take our voices and bring it to them and make sure they do something about it.
Hi, my name is Terry Suckowitz, and I live in Allegheny County. Um, the effect of the cracker plant is going to affect all of southwestern Pennsylvania. We're going to be a cancer alley. So fossil fuels belong in the ground. That's what, that's what the cracker plant is still about, fossil fuels. Um, it's time to say no to Shell, for you guys to do whatever you can. This thing that this is not part of what, what we do, do it anyway. It's going to end up killing, if it doesn't kill you, it's going to kill your children or your children's children. It's not going to just be, you know, pick out the poor people or the people we don't mind. It's going to be everybody. Um, Shell doesn't have a right to pollute the air, water, and soil. If I did anything like this, I'd be in jail. For all of the, um, wrongs that they have committed, and they're still running? It, it's absurd. It's, it's, I have a hard time believing it. And the other thing is, and you know it, Shell lies. They're not going to tell us the truth unless there's something or someone sitting right on top of them to make them do it. Shell needs to shut down until all of these problems have been resolved.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Matt Nevin, I'm a resident of McCamboos in Allegheny County. And I operate from an organization called Allegheny Beanways. We're a nonprofit that operates in Hettin, Hoppus, and Netton, and Keysport, so we work a lot throughout Allegheny County, um, and also in the Long Valley. And, uh, what we do is we clean up improperly managed manufactured waste. Uh, we do this on land, in neighborhoods, in abandoned lots, in parkland, and along our rivers, the Ohio, the Allegheny, the Monongahela. And, uh, you want to know what the most amount of stuff we find is? It's plastic. It's on our shorelines, it's in our backyards, it's in the ground, it's above the ground, it's everywhere. Um, we're doing a Monongahela River series cleanup right now, and I've gone to a number of cleanups. I work as a communications coordinator for the organization, so, um, I go to, on average, like, a cleanup a week. And, um, along the shoreline, you'll see a straight line along the shoreline. It's just white. It's white with foam, it's white with microplastics. And it's because they break down, uh, or they break apart. They don't break down, they don't dissolve, they don't go away, they break apart into smaller and smaller pieces, and they don't go away, and they end up in our bodies. You all have microplastics in you right now, we all have them in us. And they're not going away. So, uh, a lot of people have spoken about the, uh, acute pollution attacks that are happening right now locally, but the stuff that they're making at this plastic facility, uh, they're ending up everywhere. Um, so to be aware of that, that the facility in your county that you reside over is polluting people far regions.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Pearson, and I'm here to read a statement from a resident named Hillary Flint of Indian Valley, Pennsylvania. I actually have two statements, so don't let me forget the other one.
Well, just make sure you keep under three minutes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm tired of being a survivor. As a child, I had to survive in a home plagued by the opioid epidemic. As a teen, I had to survive chronic illness and autoimmune disease. And as a young adult, I had to survive renal cell carcinoma, a form of kidney cancer that was caused by check two, the mutation that is likely activated from environmental pollution. I'm now surviving the aftermath of a toxin bomb going off a few miles from my home and the constant pollution of plastic plants right down the river. I'm done surviving. The people of Beaver County deserve the thrive. I want the thrive. Words of Hillary Flint.
Thank you.
So, hearing all this, I have to just add a few comments. I didn't prepare anything, so please be forgiving. But hearing this, I came here and I feel even stronger. I am so concerned for the people that live here. What are you doing to protect them? What is your emergency plan? For everyone, for the kids in school, for the disabled, for those without computers, for those that make them text. You say you're not responsible for Shell, but you are responsible for those one hundred and sixty-eight thousand residents. Yet you have no more information than we do? That's scary. You know, you tell me that you didn't know about the benzene. Well, hell, that's really dangerous stuff. There's some papers circulating, can you pull that off? You want to know about it, read that. You've got little kids? Believe me, you're going to want to know when there's benzene in their noses. Because that's an impact, and like, she's not, it's not going to just be that person and that person, it's going to be all of us. This scares me. Please, hold Shell accountable. You took an oath to protect the people who live here. There was eleven notices of violation, thirteen malfunctions in Shell in six months. In two weeks, they exceeded eleven, eleven pollution for the entire year. And every day after those two weeks, this is more pollution. In two weeks! And they're not even officially working yet? I don't get it. You have limits, we have limits on VOCs, NOX, carbon monoxide, noise, light, for a reason. But we're not holding them accountable? Really, aren't you concerned? It's your kids, it's your health, it's your future. Anyway, I just have one more testimony. And I'm sorry, this is a nameless person, it's a little person. This is what that person wants for Beaver County. I see clear skies, I see flowers, and I see nothing else. I see lots of room for growth, improvement, good things to come in there. And also, not more pollution, not more plastic. That's what your citizens want. Let's get it to them. Thanks for your time.
Any other comments? Yes, please, standard, state your name and your address, please.
My name's Margaret Klein, I live at one forty-one Coward Drive in the Falls, actually, in our formerly potential. Um, I wasn't engaged during the whole beginning of this Shell plant, and I feel sad that I wasn't. And I don't really understand the termeting process and what contracts you entered with this company. But it seems to me that you just keep saying how powerless you are, that you're impotent when it comes to holding Shell accountable. This is an election year. And when the next potential super polluter comes to Beaver County and says, we'd like to come in and bring all these jobs, and gives you their song and dance, I want to know that my commissioners will create some leverage, real leverage, should it go sideways like this whole thing has. should it go sideways like this whole thing has.
Just say no.
Do you like to just kind of?
I mean, you have, actually, can you answer that question? It seems like you have no leverage.
We are rarely the first ones to know when someone comes into an area and wants to build something.
But you could have required that, could you not?
No ma'am.
No ma'am. That's not the way that the Commonwealth has set up, the Constitution. Bob Svesker just gave us the dissertation on.
There's not a permitting process?
It goes to your local municipality.
It's a local control, the Commonwealth, all of the ordinances.
Beaver County does not have zoning.
We have no zoning, we have no county zoning.
Why do you have no zoning? This is a very good question.
Because that's the way the Commonwealth.
And I'm gonna bring it up a lot during this election.
I would agree with you, and you wanna make sure you wanna ask the right people who make those laws, which is the state representatives and people in Harrisburg and the state centers, because the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania makes the laws that the county of Beaver follows, but we are a fourth-class county.
They say you cannot have zoning.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have that.
That's a local jurisdiction.
But we have no jurisdiction over this. Thank you.
And then we'll just do Bob a little bit. If you've ever heard me say, "That's not my job," I've been misquoted. Because I never say something isn't my job. I may tell you what I can do, what I can't do, what I have purview over, and I don't have purview. But I will listen to any issue and try and find a resolution, whether it's under our purview or not. I think we all feel the same way.
Well, I encourage you next time a super polluter comes to you and says they're gonna bring jobs to Beaver County, make it create some leverage.
Yeah.
Any other comments on non-agend items? I see a half raise over here. If you just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Marian Cook. I live in Pittsburgh in Allegheny County. And again, my name is Marian Cook. I live in Pittsburgh in Allegheny County. And I'm one of the people who tries to reduce the damage when this stuff happens, and tries to prevent it from happening in the first place. Many of us who are here today were at.
Excuse me, ladies, can you, if you'd like to have a conversation, can you please move to the hallway? We're trying to hear this ma'am speak.
Yeah. Many of the folks here today were at the meeting where three supervisors in Potter Township did have some leverage, because that's the township where it happened. They heard testimony before it happened. And, I mean, I'm a planetary scientist, chemical engineer. We have a lot of people in the activist community who know what's going on and know what is likely to happen. We have the example of Cancer Alley in Louisiana. And what the people there have been suffering with even more facilities like this one, and worse. But that doesn't mean that we should invite that here. Yes, the state and federal regulators have say. But ultimately, Potter Township did have say. But the company came in beforehand, offered to write their zoning. So I think it was Shell provided lawyers to write new zoning for Potter Township that enabled this to happen. That is, I don't know that for certain, but that is what I have heard.
So you are spreading something that you don't know for certain.
We don't, we don't.
I mean, we don't, I mean, listen, I.
A lot happens behind closed doors, just the slam you're trying to make.
But again, you are repeating what every other individual said here today. Is we hear your concerns. One thing that we can facilitate is making sure that we have a local emergency management plan that our citizens and our residents feel safe about. I believe we have one in place that is a very good one. We are very well-trained. And I will tell you, if you rest Norfolk Southern trained derailment, you will see how much better trained we are in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania than the state of Ohio, who ultimately control what is going on with the cleanup. There, not the Commonwealth, not Beaver County, not Darlington Township, not South Beaver, but Ohio. So can you please continue on? And if you don't know something that isn't true, you know, I don't know for sure.
I did label that one thing that I'm not a hundred percent sure of. I know a lot of stuff happens behind closed doors, and I have heard the bit about the zoning, someone else who made it work. Anyway, and you bring to bear a point, an important point that needs to be made. What happened in Potter Township in that commissioner meeting with three commissioners who were regular citizens who had stepped up to serve, but who had been hearing some combination of, we won't speculate on what they heard behind closed doors, but who already had their minds made up, apparently, because it would be impossible to hear the testimonies in that room and decide the way they did if they hadn't already had their mind made up. But what happened in that room affects people downwind, which Beaver and Vantport are right target central. And similarly, the derailment just happened to happen on the very eastern end of Ohio, and is mostly affecting Pennsylvanians, because we have prevailing westerns. Similarly, Ohio has the right to decide what happens with regard to the proposed TTG Global Chemical Cracker Plant, which affects people in the northern panhandle of West Virginia and western Pennsylvania. So we need a bigger voice. And I hope that you will advocate for that bigger voice in your positions of relative to Joe's citizen, greater power and greater reach. So, because that, it is not fair. What is happening with the Shell plant? External, and the point was made about externalizing costs. They are internalizing profits and externalizing costs, as every extractive industry has been doing for centuries. And it's so unfair that people's health and their lives are ruined by, in order to line somebody's pockets and somebody's Cayman Island bank account. Thank you.
Ma'am, I see, yes, did you do a half man raise? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Teri Long, I'm an Alquippa. And I'm here, we're clear council and the other organizations who are here. And I just have two questions. I'm hearing that you have no power to confront Shell and about the many issues that have been raised. But am I wrong that you had a role to play in bringing the plant here? Am I wrong that the board of commissioners had a role in bringing you here?
So I would disagree with your first comment. We do confront Shell with the concerns that we have as residents, the concerns we receive from our residents, we definitely confront them. We don't have any authority to regulate them, which means we can't shut them down. We can't tell them what they could put into the air, we can't tell them what they could put into the water. I can tell you, and I'm not saying anything about a prior board, but that was prior to taking office. In 2016, when I first took office, they did announce they were coming here. All of that was done prior to that. I'm not saying I wasn't a Shell supporter. But I will tell you, again, I will be the first person to call them and complain about the concerns that we get. So I don't think your question, I don't wanna say it's not a fair question, but we could say whatever we want to. And yeah, please come here, we would like you to support our industry, we'd like you to support our residents, like you support all the money they invested in schools, our community college, and our municipalities. But ultimately, the commissioners know they do not have any role in actually physically bringing them there. I don't believe so. That was before me.
I will tell you, Teri, I mean, you know, my background. I was running the Chamber of Commerce. I was a supporter of Shell coming in here. Had no legal input, had no connections to anything, but I definitely was an advocate for coming here. And I'm glad they did come. And quite frankly, during the pandemic, having six billion dollars invested into your backyard helped us survive a pretty bad economic downturn that a lot of counties didn't suffer, because we had eight thousand, ten thousand employees coming in here, shopping in our downtown, shopping in Manaca. The mall wouldn't be here if Shell didn't come, St. Martin's. This wouldn't be investing in Monica Baker campus and going on the stuff. The Donald Tesco wrote, Stolzig Glass would have found Beaver County on the map and invested from Austria into Ankerhocking, and is investing three to six billion dollars in increasing the jobs by a couple of hundred. I mean, there's lots, I'm still glad that Shell came. It's the best marketing plan for Beaver County we ever could have. Put us back on the map and got us moving in the right direction for some growth and prosperity. I know people don't wanna hear that, I'm just telling you, look at all the facts and all the data.
I just have to wonder if there wasn't another path. And that I would ask another path, and I mean something that's clean and healthy for people. And I just would ask, what can you do now to bring that kind of thing to Beaver County instead?
We were last at the same meeting of Riverwise that they hosted with Bill Flannigan. We talked about our strengths and our weaknesses, and advanced manufacturing being one of the legacy advantages that we have here in Beaver County, and in revitalizing some of the brownfield sites into new and different kinds of manufacturing. I'm all about diversifying the economy, I'm all about diversifying our electrical supply. But you just can't turn that switch off by eliminating gas and oil overnight. It's not gonna happen. And that's why I'm always looking for a lane, looking for balance, looking to bring more technology companies, we're investing in entrepreneurship in our downtowns. We're all about bringing in clean jobs and clean energy where we can.
And I think we'd like to know what help you need from us to make that happen.
Well, I've seen Skyler's things, I'm very intrigued by his stuff. The guy at Landos Farms in Ohio has talked about all the stuff, the orses you talked about, to renovate the farmland out there and stuff. So it's all good stuff, and I think there's a place for it, for sure.
Skyler, if you can make it real quick.
I was just wondering, do you have the power to schedule a town hall between Shell and the DEP? Like the regional DEP?
So we could request, we could request that the DEP does a town hall. They would probably prefer it to be a listening town hall, and not necessarily be able to give you those answers that you're asking, take your concerns back. We could ask Shell, but as a commissioner, I could probably sit here confidently and tell you they won't attend.
How do we facilitate that transparency, though? Is there any?
As a private business, I don't believe they would be, they would probably take more. We could always ask. And I was gonna go back to my next thing is, is there any other comments on non-agend items? I mean, after hearing almost a little over an hour of questions and concerns related to the commissioners, and I know you may not be happy with all of our answers, but I want you to know that we sat here for an hour and listened to many of you who we don't really have to. And I'm not saying that for a reason, but we want you to know that we wanna hear your concerns from Allegheny County, from the nonprofits who are here, because we are able, as somebody mentioned, educate ourselves. If we could educate ourselves on more things, we can then go to those people and use our voice. But it looks like we have three asks, really three asks, from Andy and the lady from Shelley, I'm sorry. And, you know, we're gonna ask some questions for you, you know, what are real-time notifications? You know, are they whenever we get them? Or are they whenever? So these are questions we could hash out to be able to see if we could facilitate this. And then the third one is about the town hall. You know, we could hold a town hall at the Community College of Beaver County, have two thousand people there, and we could sit there and listen to you, but we're only gonna be able to say what we said here today. So we wanna see who are the right people. You know, from Norfolk Southern, we had a town hall slash.
Hearing.
Hearing, and/or.
Sunday hearing.
And/or an event where we have the DEP, the EPA, the Farm Bureau, other organizations there to answer questions that you may have. So I think we'll work with Shelley and Andy to see what you're actually, what do you actually wanna see done, when it comes to the town hall? We know what you wanna, we know what you want done, but that's something we can't do.
That's probably our biggest power.
That expanded on all of that, so we're ready to have that conversation.
Absolutely. So we'll get with you after the meeting and discuss, you know, what, get in detail, you know. We could do a real-time notification, but again, as an individual said earlier, not everyone texts, not everyone emails, not everyone has TV, not everyone has the internet. So how do we get those real-time notifications out, and what is the best way? We're not gonna send a siren off. Yes. So.
Our biggest power is to facilitate, get Beaver to the table.
When it comes to this.
If you require, if you require, remember COVID, how bad COVID got here. And COVID got pretty bad down at the plant. And we had a press conference out here. And we asked them, we didn't tell them, we asked them to shut down, to try to put down the COVID spread in Beaver County. And I reminded them of the promises that they made. And a day later.
Well, they responded, then they shut down for three months.
They didn't shut down because we required them. They didn't shut down because we made them shut down. They shut down because we asked them.
And they had the same concerns about flooding the hospitals with COVID patients at a time when herpes valley was pretty stressed. But they listened, shut down, put in extraordinary measures.
Thank you for that. Keep asking them, keep asking them, Frank, are they?
Thank you. Any other visitors' comments on non-agend items? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'll make it very quick, I'm terrified to speak in public. My name is Robyn Leskun from Allegheny County Food and Water Watch, Pennsylvania. When we were talking about zoning, we were saying there's no countywide zoning. Are there individual zoning, zoning for individual municipalities?
Each municipality has the right to pass zoning laws, or not to pass.
I believe there's a couple that have no zoning.
Oh, I believe that, that's why I just wanted to double check that. Does Potter Township have any zoning on the books or anything like that? I was just checking to see if there were any contiguous municipalities that had zoning that are continuous with Potter Township, maybe have exercised their right under the municipalities planning code, section 502, which says you have the right to go into mediation if a contiguous municipality has ordinances or acts that are violating any health and safety ordinances you might have for your municipality.
All the municipalities in that area have zoning, but Potter Township is the one that has jurisdiction over Shell.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other comments on non-agend items? All right, now, the next Beaver, the Beaver County Crossroads will close Wednesday, June 14th until 23rd, in service to Flag Day. Next public meeting will be held Thursday, June 22nd until 23:10 AM in the Commissioner's Public Meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
On favor, same probably saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.